Still Smith. Holly.
Yeah.
Holly. Um, anybody else that you you sign in right there at the door, appreciate it.
Alright, did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes in the hand where it's third meeting? Assuming so. Okay, we're going to approve all those your emotion.
I'm in motion, we approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion is second in all favor of I.
I.
Well, goes in time, time like I can't. I didn't say I. I wasn't. Okay. Who's Holly? Holly, do you?
Alright, um.
Is the button up need be up?
There you go.
Don't tap the table.
So we have been busy writing overlay districts. Um, we have three of them that we sent out to the strategic planning committee for review. Um, we printed hard copies for the committee members. Um, I don't know, do you want me to connect and bring it up on the screen? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, and then, um, I'm actually gonna have Molly walk you through them and I'm here to um, answer questions as well and um, discuss it with the the committee and the the public, but we're gonna have her walk you through it and talk about permitted uses. And um, the design standards, uh, we're not gonna get into procedure tonight. Um, just because that's gonna be more standard um, with all three districts. Um, and I think we should reflect or take time to reflect more on the uses and the design standards tonight, so. I'll turn it over with you, we're gonna start with mixed use.
Um, I'm Molly, everybody. Um, I'm a planner with and I'm happy to be here and work with you all um, and present this um, our overlay districts to you. Um, so like Holly said, um, we're gonna start with the mixed use districts. We combined um, both of the mixed use districts into one um, for this first draft. They have lots of similarities, the biggest difference lies in the um, density between the eight um, dwelling units per acre and twelve dwelling units per acre. And then the net, the differences in um, both the districts are noted throughout the document here. Um, so it starts with our purposes. Um, we have purposes A through J here, these are all aligning uh, with the quick strategy guide. Um, and if you have any questions about the specifics of these, let me know. Next, we have our overlay area. Um, this just shows the two mixed use districts, so there's um, mixed use district A and mixed use district B referenced throughout the document. Our next section, the effect, um, this is the same that's in the current PRCD essentially. Um, so there is not much change there, but what we really wanna get into are the permitted uses that we have.
Yeah, I'm getting up there. Sure. Where is your, um, since you changed your?
One of the homepage, you know, it's at the bottom, there's an events. I got it.
Oh, we did it?
Yeah, I under myself.
Okay, so, um. Um, so this is the beginning of it, these are the purpose of the statements. Again, these are aligning with the quick strategy guide. And if you have any questions about the specifics of these, uh, please let me know. Lots of these are just talking about um, trying to prevent annexation in the township and protecting it this way. Um, creating usable open space, um, ensuring that we have design characteristics to guide development um, in the ways that we think are best for our own township. And then using different economic development tools to prevent annexation.
So, on this first section, um. I guess I would take your letter A and move that down to maybe go next to the last. And start this with your number C. Which would be provide an opportunity, provide for an opportunity for appropriate rather mix of uses while protecting the rural character of the township. I think that it's really the focus of of what the purpose should be, sorry, at least from the. And then in order to protect the southern area of Harlem Township from annexation, I think you go maybe below sewer connectivity for private owners and above allowing to carry economic development. And the only other thing questioned on this was should there be some mention of density in the purpose?
No, I don't think you wanna mention the specific densities and the purposes.
With the control density.
Yeah, we can do something like that.
But you, you know, you're talking about again, you know, protecting the role of character. Um, and how you're doing, you know, create usable and accessible open space, I would pair that somehow with managing the density.
That's fine, for managing, controlling, that's, those are all good words, I just didn't wanna put an actual number in there, okay?
Um, and then moving on, just going out a bit, we have the overlay area, this includes an image of what um, the mixed use overlay district is, um, and then that's broken down into um, basically picture A and the light blue and mixed use district B in the darker blue here. Um, the effect section, um, this is basically saying all land on that map is eligible to be in this overlay district, um, and this is very similar to what is in the PRCD currently.
You will notice some blank spots.
That's up for one second too, in this um, section. Um, this is where, when you pull down the cloud, um, and you get development plan approval, that it's an administrative act and not rezoning. Um, all of the blank spaces in here are referring to the article that this is currently, it doesn't currently have a number. Cause it's not in action yet, um, so that's what all the blank spaces that you might see throughout the document.
So this we all in currently zone? And then with whatever the district with whatever the designation is.
In the PRCD, that blank space highlighted in yellow is um, basically just describing the borders. Is that what you're asking, the first blank space in the first paragraph?
This is under section XX dot O three, yeah, the first paragraph, all land currently. What what would, what would the text sort of be like?
It would say, um, we could either describe, probably describe the borders, saying so, starting at the street on the north, the street in the south.
Um, and there's no, it doesn't make any sense to actually put parcel numbers in there.
Oh, no, I wouldn't do that, no. Cause we want it to be general. Um, you wanna say generally bounded by and then use the roads? And then, and ask specifically just um, depicted in the map as exhibit whatever. Is that just because parcels get too specific and could change over time? They can be split, they can get different parcel numbers, so you don't wanna reference parcels. A map, I mean, you can always overlay that with a more recent map.
Can I ask a question? We have the eight or the twelve boxes per acre. Does that mean it's residential or it could be commercial in there too?
The resident, the density is referring to the residential, but this is a mixed use overlay, so there can be commercial intertwined with that. It could be a mixed use building, it could be commercial on the bottom with residential on the top. Or it could be condos with a neighborhood commercial next to it, serving it. But it would be unlikely to be like a commercial unit dominator. Correct.
Is there a limitation on commercial versus residential? Density?
The density for commercials more typically, you don't refer to commercial as density, you could refer to it as lot coverage. Um, and floor area, I didn't get into floor area ratios, but you can if you want to really talk about that.
Right in front of my house.
We do control it through height too, though.
Excuse me, may I ask a question? When you determined on the south side that that's gonna be mixed use in that one area to the right it's bumped up.
Yes.
Okay, and come down and go to the left. The, the necessity to have that, that segment there, why was that determined right there exactly?
Here?
Yes.
Um, because we have larger pieces of land that were more conducive to a walkable type mixed use community um, that we felt it made sense in this area.
So you have on the bottom there that's the, that's a, if you just take, like on the corner of Green Cook and Fancher, you got fifty acres on the left, fifty acres on the right. Not up where you're at, but now down right there, okay? Fifty acres isn't su- isn't sufficient, you've actually moved to like seventy-five or so up that way, I think. Oh, I'm sorry, wait, I'm looking at the road, you're south of Fancher underneath there, is that correct?
Yes.
That's south and then that's north.
Correct.
Okay, so, same question though, basically. So, going north of Fancher there, why is that, again, explain to me why that's so necessary and, and selfishly my lot almost abuts that.
Sure, sure. Um, because as you are coming through this area, there, there's some larger areas that are um, conducive to commercial development, given the area and proximity to Intel. And the ability to develop a more walkable mixed use area um, makes sense on these larger tracks on the north side.
Is it, is it necessary to do that in relation to annexation?
So we need to protect the borders um, from the annexation. Um, most likely, I think the southern um, areas under Fancher Road, as I mentioned in the presentations, um, community meetings. They most likely will, could redevelop. Um, but in case that they didn't, or they were later on down the road, this provides that second layer of defense for the township, because if somebody, one or two people would sell their lots and this border wasn't here, it could potentially open that up to annexation. So yes, it's necessary for, to protect from annexation.
So having no experience with this, all of those homes are brand new in that section. They still, people like that would still sell.
People can, I, there have been a lot of houses in and around the area that have been brand new in the last five years that have been torn down for redevelopment.
Another issue is going up, um, county line. We already know that it is property to the east, large parcels that have been acquired.
Correct.
So that's why you also, we took it up.
That's correct.
That direction.
Yeah.
Are those large parcels you're referring to then in Licking County?
Yes, correct.
I have an informational question about this, uh, given what you um, anticipated, we best development used to prevent, um, to allow development that could pre- prevent annexation. I assume it will definitely need um, large sewer system in first. And along this section here, I know previously in the meetings, it was mentioned that New Albany had previously mentioned putting sewer lines through there, what would be New Albany's motivation if they don't wanna annex that area anyway? Would there be like a joint um, economic development agreement, you know?
So we talked about two different things, yeah, we talked about the sewers coming in at the southeast corner, southwest corner. We also talked about the potential of sewers coming up from New Albany this way um, and going up County Line Road.
What would be New Albany's motivation for that?
If they, they potentially could want some type of commercial development and potentially have a joint economic development. Um.
Because they don't really wanna annex that into New Albany, do they?
No, they do not, they're correct about that, they don't want, um, they don't want residential for sure, um, and commercial they may annex, but um, I would say that if we can have the area for joint economic development district, we are protecting the township in a much better.
Which would come first, the sewers or the joint economic development agreement?
They all happen simultaneously, you're working on the agreements while the sewers wa- coming down the street.
Okay.
Okay.
So the next section we have here is our permitted uses. Um, so firstly, mixed use buildings, um, as the name of the district suggests. Then we have common wall, single family, single family, house dwellings, so condos. Two and multifamily dwellings provided they comprise no more than eight dwelling units per acre for the mixed use district A and no more than twelve dwelling units per acre in the mixed use district B. Um, nursing homes, independent senior living facilities, assisted living facilities are all permitted here. Um, retail stores, these are listed by type. Um, but they have to be small or medium type retail stores. Um, and small and re- small and medium has been defined um, as well.
I suggested under E, you strike, it, it, it says retail stores in the definition of things that are allowed, like in in like the one, two, three, fourth line down, like second to last thing. It's basically like, I see retail stores and that list of examples and then it just says retail stores. That seems a little circular.
And you were saying in, in number E, it's a very end small or medium retail establishments. And then you define those by size, square footage.
So there is also a definitions document that has, um, it has definitions for uh, like, things like brick and stone, um, square footage, yeah. So those are defined um, in a separate document. Next, there are eating and drinking facilities. Parks, recreation and community centers, offices, and those are also listed by type here. Um, veterinarians, pet grooming shops and boarding, early childhood education, elementary, middle high school and technical colleges are included here. Um, and then accessory service buildings and structures that are incidental to these permitted uses.
Our next.
When you say mixed use and talk about all these different types are they, they need requirement for green spaces also or, or not?
So all of the um, actual development standards are following the document, which we'll get to. Yeah, so there are certain requirements for green spaces.
Do we, the, um, L, um, that's grooming and boarding. Uh, why boarding? Because that implies runs, which implies noise which usually is a nuisance. So is there, we, we don't have to have boarding, do we?
Yes. Yes.
Boardings are already allowed.
Well, the new structure, um, my son owns two veterinary hospitals. And the new structure now is everybody has boarding to augment their income on all the new uh, business plans for veterans. So they're not the uh, uh, typical drop off where you go to work, like boarding. But they do, you know, regular boarding or vacations that have stuff, after surgery care. That type of thing. So that's, that's the new business model.
External runs.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, yeah, very few.
Yeah, my concern, we should restrict that it's indoor only.
You're still gonna hear the dog's bark. Uh? He's still gonna hear the, hear the dog.
Oh, you might, depending.
Or they're technically not like a hundred dollars, but you know, they, they have to have some more. Okay.
Um, so the next section has prohibited uses, so right off the bat, anything that is not um, explicitly listed in the permitted uses is not allowed, but we further describe things that we definitely don't wanna see, so. No storage of vehicles, um, including trailers, semi-tractors, um, outside. Um, no storage of boats, um, no equipment of any type. No mobile homes or mobile office structures unless specifically permitted. No trash or discarded material shall be permitted to accumulate. No outside storage of any kind, no auto oriented uses. Auto oriented uses also described, um, so this is things like the typical McDonald's drive-through, things like this. Um, we do have in this section, we have allowed things like curbside pickup is permitted for a restaurant or pickup windows where you've placed your order online and you just need to grab it from the store. Um, those have been becoming more common, and so those have been included as a permitted use, but again, nothing where you're actually placing the order at the window and then waiting for your order to be prepared is allowed.
Business, the business will go in this area.
Sorry?
Someone, someone, a, 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 a business being built in this area, I just wanna make sure that fourteen day does not include like construction, graphic or construction.
Correct, it would not, but we can clarify that for you in there.
Uh, Molly, one other question, uh, Tommy, for those who don't know me. Point oh five, section A, uh, use is not specifically authorized by the express terms of this article. And that refers, I assume, back to uh, point that in section just above it. Specifically authorized, if something is not specifically listed in section point oh four it's off. So we have to be really careful about running around and looking at what, what's, what's out there and deciding yes or no.
Correct, now. Correct, if, if somebody came to you and it wasn't on the list, but you felt it was something that was appropriate you could amend the text, take it through the rezoning process to amend the text and then they could come back and pull the, the cloud down, but you can't do a divergence. Yeah. You cannot. And that, I don't have that language in here, cause I left your procedure section the exact way that you have it, cause I didn't wanna get into that tonight. Um, but in other overlays I have done, I have put specific language in there to make it very clear that you cannot change the uses without going through a rezoning.
So for example, in section H where you have offices of physicians, dentists, osteopaths, et cetera, physical therapists are not listed.
But it, but it also says like, or other allied medical, dental or optical fields account. And similar in like section E, there is a statement that it says, or any other like smaller, medium retail establishments consisted with the above uses. So even though not every specific possible business is listed, it gives a little bit of leeway by saying like other like small and medium establishments.
And then it's up to the zoning commission to determine what that like is.
Okay.
So we would not have to amend?
Not in that particular case, not, but let's say, somebody wanted to come in and.
Well, let's say in, in J, daycare.
That's early childhood education.
But, yeah, they're called.
They're called that now, now we define it that way, because I've been told many times, we're not calling daycare now, call them early childhood.
Lot more words. Didn't help with the local, ready.
They're about order points, for example.
That's because that's considered an auto oriented, um, use in this definition. And so I excluded those. But that's.
From, from what Molly was saying auto oriented uses are more drive-throughs rather than what they're selling, it's the way you.
Yeah, it, it's actually both, yes. I, the, what I said is not the complete definition, but that definition is.
I didn't say problem with small napas or something like. I mean, that's, that's retail.
Is that what's, is that what audio or auto oriented uses is like a, an auto parts?
For you guys to read that up there, but I'll read it out loud, so automobile oriented use is a use where service is rendered or a sales transaction is made, well, the patron is typically not required to exit his or her vehicle or a facility that includes services rendered directly onto or for vehicles. It also includes drive, this includes drive-throughs restaurants, drive-in restaurants, drive-through banks, drive-in movie theaters, car washes of all types gas stations, including convenient mar- markets. Facility specializing in oil chains, car repair, other similar auto service facilities and a standalone parking lot. This includes the sale of new and used vehicles in addition to any facility that provides a fixed parcel pickup location that is not included in this definition, but it does not include curbside picking. I think a nap of store would qualify as retail.
Yeah, the way I'm reading this, okay.
So would you want to know? Sort of, but so, so a nap of store would be okay?
It would be okay.
Um, an oil, an oil change store would.
That would not.
So any kind of automotive service would not be okay. It's a part, but you can't put them in.
Right.
And nap stores, they'll change batteries, they'll put wipers on.
They don't have the bays that you're pulling in and working.
A lot, a lot of that comment was the, the drive-through part.
Right.
And that store doesn't have a drive-through, but uh, the Valvoline oil change as the drive-through base.
So oil changes out, yes.
Or a car wash.
I have a question or comment rather, for any um, terms that we use in here that are more clearly defined in like the definition sheet. Can we either have them like hold it or underline or make some comment to say like, you know, see definitions? Cause I think otherwise it's not very clear that like auto oriented uses has this much more specific definition.
I can do any way you like it, some communities have us, um, capitalize the word if it's defined, some places wanna underline, some places wanna bold, do, do you guys have a preference?
Link to the definition.
We can on the electric, like, but how do you do it if you're handing somebody a piece of paper?
Maybe you underline it, highlight it, blue.
Yeah, make it look like a hyperlink, yeah. I, I just, as long as there's some way to make it kind of obvious that there's a better definition to cause otherwise, like when I just, when I read letter H and it said no auto oriented uses I didn't know that that included drive-throughs, for example.
Mm-hmm, so, yep.
Will there be a, will there be a list somewhere that attempts to be exhaustive as to the uses that are allowed as opposed to a shorter paragraph like what we're seeing here that allows a lot of people to kind of figure out what they think it means versus somebody else and, and that leaves open the idea that nobody thought about it at all. And now.
We tried to.
Does Genoa or other townships who have seen this movie? Does anybody have an exhaustive list?
Oh, yeah, there are, there are places that use the NICS codes and I think it's way overkill and I prefer to have it this way.
There's a lot, I mean, I can see a business coming along that you know, as, as, as things develop and change that would fit, but if it's not listed, then what? I mean, it fits every other.
I guess the point is, you're gonna have people approaching you with, well, what about this?
Well, that's, that person's gonna be.
And I guess my question is, are you better served to have an exhaustive list?
Hmm, no. I think, yeah, I think that would be.
Have everything be a question mark?
No.
I, I can see a real problem with that.
Well, well, what, what does that create? What problem does that create if it's on the list and it's an example?
Like I just said, we have a business that comes along that doesn't pigeonhole right into that. But it, it, but it, it is allowed, but you didn't name it, now what do you do?
So you're already saying you're gonna provide for an exception.
No, you cannot provide an exception for you. Cannot. For, for uses, it's a rezoning.
Yep.
You cannot, so.
So if you give a list of exactly what you have, then every time somebody comes in with a little bit of a twist, but still would fit in that, that, that pigeonhole. Then you have to go through the rezoning.
So if you don't have a list and somebody comes to you with that same idea.
Then it's subjective.
It gives the, it gives the zoning commission some flexibility to say this blends with the character because it, it's under the other similar type uses.
That still allows us some control.
But for example, again, uh, shoe repairs are okay, computer repair, not listed.
It would be allowed because.
Be allowed, it's more of the fact that you get out of your car and you go into a business, it's gonna be the big.
Yes, yeah, yes, it also says any other like smaller and medium retail.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just a quick question, everything that you're talking about right now with the commercial on the bottom and. Livable space on the top, schools and all that, are you talking about just that shaded area of nature right now?
Yes.
Is that the only section, is like that? Old area of venture all the way down to six oh five is gonna be basically commercial?
Depends on which property owners sell to developers who want to develop it.
And, and there can be, it's also, it could be commercial, but there's also the ability to have residential intertwined into it.
And you can retain your current zone.
Yeah, existing zoning states.
So what kind, what type of that, so is Harlem Township creating a sewer district, allow businesses? Because I can't see businesses on subjects.
There won't be, the sewers are concerned, we've already got three points that are, that are in danger of being. One definitely gonna have to sort by twenty six.
Right.
And the other, other southern quarter, corner of this township, there's basically drawings out there, maps out there that are already showing it. And the sort of potential from the northwest. So what we've done, in a nutshell, I'm correcting if I'm wrong, is we're generating these districts and, and this, because especially the southern. Delaware County, then city meetings, Delaware County, accepted a certain number of people tapping into this. The commercial can give us. Uh, an easier way to get to that number without actually having. We would need more residents, we want strictly residential.
Thirty, thirty-four thousand people. So, um, I encourage you to get on the website, there's a link to the video.
Yeah, I, I watched the video, I wasn't here last week, or the last meeting, so I just want to get clarity because some of us living at. That southeast corner, that, you guys are defending this in jeopardy, on Fancher Road, so. We're just trying to see, you know, if businesses really, their potential, where you live them, along the southeast corner of Fancher Road.
Southeast corner, okay, so what are the new development? Right, right, so, but chances are, there's not a lot gonna happen, if you, right? But.
But there's properties across the street, or if they're saying fifty acres on both sides, then you have.
But they, they can't deviate from the current zonings, there's different things you can do. Yeah, they can't go to this and see a sewer. Well, and they can't jump Fancher without having a property on the south side.
Right.
So people are happy with their homes and keep those and they also have to aggregate enough of them to be able to get a. An allowance to do this sort of thing to pull it down, so if we can create a block. Uh, and, you know, people are happy where they live and don't sell out because they get a mega buck offer, that, that's the risk, you may have one too. But your neighbor gets a visiting, somebody throws a million and a half bucks at him, eight hundred thousand dollar house, they're probably gonna be saying, how do you do this for that? They might not, but, but that's the risk and, but, but you also have the risk under the current. That, you know, we just, uh, we just lost, what is that, sixty-seven meters on a home, right, to current one? Yeah, so, I mean, it's, when you're talking about fifty acres, a lot cost them, I mean. That they could have developed that into houses now, without this issue setting. So, we're trying to control the growth in the sewer, I mean, because it's mandated.
Well, for sure, you want to produce township, a hundred percent get that.
Right, because I'm trying to give you an idea, when you're, when you're worried about.
That.
When we're all worried about what's happening around the homes, people should not forget. That it's already zoning place in some way can still develop, so I'm just throwing that out there.
Oh, for sure, okay.
However, they'd have to develop on minimum acreage right now, of two acres, right?
Right.
Yeah, which to all of us is much better, but we, I understand the blockage of the mixed use, but. You know, I mean, if you had, if you gave me a choice to drive by two acre lots or. An assisted living facility, God forbid a NAPA auto parts store, okay? I'm gonna take the two acre lots.
Right, but that, that choice has been taken.
I get it, I get it.
The other thing is that the zoning resolution, as it exists now, as an R one, uh article. One acre lots with access to. So, that's in the zoning resolution.
You can do one acre with a, with a substance. Sewer, when sewer comes, yeah, okay, okay.
So, yeah, you know, that's what I'm saying, don't forget when all they have zoning, allows subdivisions.
Yeah.
So, we're just redefining in an auto. Mandating not even control because we're being forced to take sewer. I mean, we're not, township has no, no ability to stop the sewer.
Right.
And, and, and to your question, I think the township is not going to be the sewer district. I mean, Delaware County Regional Sewer District will come down here and. Probably, um, maybe we sell, I suggest, for us, they'll, they'll run the feeder lines into the main from coming up.
I have four questions on Zoom, do you want me to go through those?
Yeah, let's take this one first.
Okay.
I spoke today to Jeff Benton and Gary Merle, the county commissioners, and to, I think her name's Maggie, woman is in charge. So they both, uh, the commissioners told me that, uh, they had no intention to run sewer lines down here if the township didn't want. And it depended on the language that you guys are sort of figuring out tonight, credit agreements or isn't some. So, now he's got, I'm telling him what they told me today, I'm, I'm telling you what he told me. So they said that they had no desire to run the sewers down here, if the township didn't want. And that would depend again on the mortgage, and then he says, as, as far as Columbus bringing the trunk line up. That, uh, he had been told by Columbus that they had no intention of bringing it all the way up. If they ran into residential, uh, they wanted a commercial property to bring in, like say. Because they get more revenue, they don't make any money off of a, of a residential, but they do off commercial. But that's what those two guys told me today, so as well as Ben. Sewer, sewer district. Right, right, you want to answer that one?
I'll answer it, the, the, the sewers are, are coming and the, everyone I have talked to has indicated that they're.
I, I've heard the exact opposite.
That it's not like the opposite of what.
Oh yeah, the contracts been less. Well, either these guys are wires or.
No, I think they're signed to date, they're not wires.
Well, apparently they are, they bring all this stuff, they're pretty knowledgeable on, I mean, I was teaching them that. And this, they were, you know, well, I'm just saying they're not, they're not.
I, I can only tell you that about a month and a half ago, I talked to the engineer in Delaware County that was assigned to the project. And she told me that the city of Columbus was in the process of reviewing the bids to get the trunk up to the Smothers River roundabout. And that they were going to award those by around the middle of November. So, this was the engineer that was on the project and she was asking for our input in the future as it got closer. To determine where they would want those trunk lines to go, so. I, I don't want to say the people you were talking to were being dishonest, but I talked to an engineer in Delaware County that told me exactly. That level of detail what was happening, so.
And I, I have spoke with them also and they're actually trying to compete in the company's, like, work and how they make a margin smaller and all that kind of stuff. They're worried about it. So, uh, what I think to town submission maybe not have, given you. Is that usually it's developer driven. And that's what they prefer, in other words, once that trunk comes up there on Smothers River. That they would want somebody that was building a big development to tap into it and pay for it themselves. But that's what they want, but that's not necessarily.
You got four people?
Um, yeah, well, actually, three of them have been answered, um, so the. Uh, other one that I want to talk about is, does the public have a say in determining the final boundaries? Of the mixed-use district south of Fancher, so as we go through this process. Uh, we will be talking about the boundaries of that area, um, we have, you know. Strategically identified where we think they need to be for, um, purposes of development tools to help prevent annexation. Um, but moving boundary lines, you know, around property lines or those sorts of things and details of those lines. Um, will be, you know, discussed as we move through this process. Everything else was more administrative and like, where's the link to the stuff, if you was able to answer those.
Sorry, th- this question was for you, is for you, last, the last meeting we had, you showed us a picture in Canal, warehouses and data centers. And before we get off topic here, you were talking about the commercial, are those, is that under? The warehouses and data centers under commercial as well?
No, they are not, they are actually called logistics or they're called warehouses. Um, if you guys feel more comfortable, we could actually pro- prohibit those uses so that you're for sure, you don't get them.
Yeah, I don't think anybody wants to see a data center or warehouse.
Yeah, where are you gonna put those? Up in my corner?
Next, um, so after this, we're having to meet some folks. Uh, we get into the design standards for all of those. So site design, um, talking about having building height, surface materials be compatible with the surrounding area. Minimizing environmental impacts, retaining or replanting native vegetation, um. So on and so forth, um, number seven is a good one, it says. Include viable pedestrian circulation system, meaning a minimum of a five-foot walking path or a ten-foot wide asphalt multi-use path throughout the development. Um, and so this is top again, talking about that walkability, connectivity. Um, trying to understand where people are gonna want to be walking and then designing those paths to serve, um, the community. Um, building design is the next section in here, um, and this is where we start talking about overall design theme. The goal of this is to make it unique to, um, Harlem Township and using materials and colors that. Transcend design trends and are more in line with what you want to see, um, with rural design for all of the buildings. So specifically, um, we have that. All exterior elevations shall be comprised of eighty percent wood, fiber, cement, board and baton brick. Or native or cultured stone, um, these are definitions that are defined in that separate document that I will add, um, to be linked. We also talked about, um, the twenty percent of accent materials. Um, specific building colors, currently we have building colors shall consist of earth tones and the ditch and browns, tans and grays. Building colors may also consist of white and barn red, we have some photos in here that kind of show. Um, some that we're looking for in regards to color as well as specific, uh, building material design. Below this, we have design elements, so this is saying that there shall be no blank walls of any sort, um. Where expenses of solid walls are necessary, they may not exceed twenty feet. So then below this, we have a list of, um, different design elements that we think be good to see on all of these developments, so. Introducing windows, um, having wood columns, patios, decks, um, trellises with plants, things like this are all included. And then these pictures on the side are just showing some examples of this, so. The picture in the middle on the left you see there, um, are some planters with some native plantings in there. Um, the image below is a mixed-use building, but it's, has more of like a barn style to it. Couple other examples, um, the one on the left is sort of streetscaping, so for places that don't have a ton of frontage. Um, what can you do besides just have sidewalk? And then on the right, just another rural design, where you appear. Roofing is the last section, sure.
Before we go on, I, I had a question, maybe some of the other people's, um, could give some input. When we went back to our, um, two-one building materials. We're on, uh, we're, we're not allowed to use vinyl or aluminum siding, except for the, um. Gutters, I understand, downs got sockets. And that type of thing, to me, that seems like a trim. And if you're looking up and you've got a nice wooden paneling and all of a sudden, you know, board and baton or whatever. Then all of a sudden, you've got this vinyl thing above that, does that sort of kill? The, um, the nature of what we want the building to look like, especially that these are smaller, commercial building. Nobody has an opinion.
Um, I, I mean, I think vinyl. Accessory type building materials these days can look pretty decent if they're done right, I don't think it all necessarily looks like the. Cheap white plastic. I, I mean, anyone else more familiar way?
Yeah, I, I, I saw some homes that were expensive and they, and they. They, they did a nice job up to that point, then they, they run an E D, the overhang with events and stuff. And, uh, looked pretty crappy, I thought, well, you went to all this trouble and then you did that, you had, Mike, you had a comment on that. Yeah, I mean, they have embossed panels that, look, you can't tell the difference once they're painted, if they're vinyl or, or wood. The recent most, a lot of overshoots, the vinyl or metal is because the ventilation. That's built into them, you, you achieve more ventilation, so, so could we make a, um. Whatever the terminology you would want to use, uh, that. Yes, you can paint it or whatever, make it, or it comes out that they look good. Uh, what I saw didn't, it just looked like cheap, you know, aluminum in there, is there a?
Is there an eloquent way to word that in the?
There, I have language from another overlay, um, where we had language like that, now it applied to the whole building, not. Just the soft bits, but where we talked about making it look a synthetic material, making it look natural.
Okay.
And I can.
Yeah, that one.
Language and just.
With a soft color or something, but, like I said, I just. So many cutting corners, I can see that happen.
And Hollywood, when this development plan comes to the zoning commission. All of those details are subject to.
Correct, correct, yes, but we do want to make sure that the language says, if, if soft bits have. Have to look like that, we need to make sure that there's language allowing you to give that, to control that, I guess.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, once, once you go to all this trouble, then you get to that point, then sort of falls. In order for all this to happen, will bench or road have to be widened?
At some point, uh, the, the traffic impact studies are coming back that yes, it, it most likely will have to be widened or we'll have to find some other. East-west connector of some sort.
So if it had to be wide, who pays for that?
It would, that's all to be determined, um, most likely be part of a development-driven process. This is all stuff covered under the presentation, again, I encourage you to click on the, the link and watch that.
Because there's some parts of Fancher where the road is higher than, than the land, and so it would have some, some serious, uh, um, radius, uh, things that had to fix.
And there's some areas of Fancher where there's not roof, where there's a lane, you go through the two cemeteries, you got bodies on both sides.
Bodies can be moved.
There's room, there's room on the back side, with the south side cemetery. Well, that would, that would not be on Fancher Road, that would be, I don't know, I have a feeling Fancher Road is gonna be rerouted. Towards Franklin County.
Because the cemetery?
Well, yeah.
That is a consideration, I mean, that, that, yeah, that is, that was a consideration.
That'd be great.
There is a thorough plan that's been on the books for twenty years. In Delaware County that says there will be next to this, public road, the, the rounding, well, going directly for, for.
The, the bridge, I mean, let's go all the way back to the bridge, the bridge is gonna get widened, we did all that. So if the bridge is getting widened, they're gonna do something, the bridge.
Across the reservoir.
Across the pond, so in the same vein, there's a question there about, uh, like, just asking about Fancher, how about Harlem, any sense of?
I have not heard anything about Harlem Road, everything that has, I've been hearing about. I have not heard anything about Harlem Road. Everything that has I've been hearing about is Fancher Road and Center Village Road.
It's more of the east west corridor that are that have made those. Being careful there.
Yeah, because logic will tell you, if you have east west corridors, you gotta have a north south connector. This mother's road.
To to Steve's point, um, we were in a meeting earlier and if and it's. No matter what you say today, it changes tomorrow. So i- i- we can't. For sure, tell you anything at this point in time, other than that roads are gonna have to be widened at some point in some place and.
Some there's, they're they're, they are going to increase the east west.
Um, any questions about the design standards before we move on?
Just a comment from a resident standpoint, Jim's comment about no vinyl, I'm all in. No point for, in my opinion, for a commercial building to have anything but, you know, uh, cement board and all that stuff. I don't care if those developers need to spend more money to do it, charge more rent, do whatever it takes. I think it should look beautiful and if it can look like those pictures and I drive by that to my front door. At least I'll feel a little bit better than driving by a bunch of vinyl.
And these are all commercial.
These are all commercial that we have in here, yes. So moving on then to the next section, um, this next section is the procedure to create a mixed development, so.
Actually, real just. Just real quick before we move on, um, some of these. The design standards get pretty like specific and technical is all is most of this pretty like standard? In, okay. Okay, just I I assumed as much, but I was just like, how did like Polly come up with all of this? So, okay, perfect.
So moving past the procedure, um, the development plan standard. So this is where we're talking about the minimum track size, minimum track size. For a mixed development is twenty five acres. Um, for open space, sorry to address your question from earlier. At least twenty percent of the gross tract acreage shall be designated as permanent open space, not to be further developed. So you do have twenty percent of the land here, um, yes, sir.
I have questions.
Okay.
We've been, Ollie, we've been going around and having discussions that we need your uh.
Sure.
Expertise on this.
Sure.
So. On a twenty five acre. That is a large, large piece of commercial.
Sure.
Alright, so if the person wants to put in a small fifth center. Yeah, which the township encourages, I mean, shops and stuff. How do they go about that if there's, if there's a twenty five acre man?
So, um, you, we, I gotta go over to. If it's not in here, well, we need to add it, but there should still be a minimum lot size requirement.
One acre, but I didn't know how that came out of this.
So that you would have, that they'd have to provide a development plan for the full twenty five acres. And then they could divide that up in any way that they want to divide it up. As long as nothing is less than that one acre.
So, so the person or the, that wants to do this long fifth center. Has to buy it off of something that already purchased.
And it has to be, yeah, it has to be part of an overall.
Bought the twenty five. And now they're splitting it off. I don't think so. I think larger developers are gonna have to develop what you're saying.
But you can't buy a piece of a twenty five acre parcel and develop it.
You can split it and by apply and then.
In other words, they designate out lots or.
Yeah, but it still has to comply with the development plan that's been approved.
So you're not saying that.
I don't know if we wanna strip them off.
You can develop less than twenty five acres. It has to, the the plan, the development plan. Has to come in at twenty five acres, right? And then you can phase that development of the twenty five acres over time into smaller pieces. But it has to all fit into that greater development.
Well, uh, so going to that, thanks for bringing that up. So that that is one. Um, so you have a larger developer that's developing the twenty five acres. So you have smaller developers who still have resources. But they can't buy twenty five acres. So are we, is it shutting them out?
No, they'd have to go to that larger developer and and buy that smaller piece off of them.
Right, so then they're paying over, you know, they're paying more than they were able to buy the property themselves. Uh, so that's, that's what the conundrum was, are we?
I understand that, but I also don't want you to get into having little tiny pieces of land and piecemealing things together.
Right, I understand that, but that's what I'm saying the conundrum is. That uh, somebody could do a nice medium level development. But yet they don't have the resources to go out and do twenty five acres.
So.
Twenty five acres is cheap.
Yeah, so what if, um, so for your smaller type developer, what's the sweet spot for acreage for somebody?
I don't know, that's why I ask you.
I mean, I think.
We we can't, we have not come up with an answer on our. I I think there's, you know, there's a this joint there, or trying to accommodate both. But we don't know what that, what that is.
I think if you go.
Twenty five acres does. Like I was saying, the twenty five acres does accommodate both, but it also protects.
So, yeah, so what I'm saying is to the guy that's develops these little.
That's exactly what it is.
Yeah, uh, so they're just basically used to buying them off the big guy. So that's a normal course of business for them.
Yeah.
Alright, so we're not shutting them.
It's it's normal for someone, you know, a developer to buy a piece of land. And he's gonna split it up and, you know, his plan is I want this, okay, you wanna do this here. Right, he's not gonna do it himself.
Right, I understand that.
So they, it's these, they're just out.
Well, what we're doing for, again, and and figuring the economics of it. Uh, I just wanted to make sure we weren't shutting them.
We're not shutting anybody else, but we're keeping, I think you.
No, we needed to drop to like twenty acres, no.
Traveling at a twenty acres is gonna get you anywhere. I think what you're, what. Individual people wanna do are out parcels at one to two acres. And I think you have to show that how that fits into a overall plan.
No, the designs is based on what the larger developer came to us with. Right, and the smaller developer would have to fit into that and come with a.
Or they have to come back and get an amended development plan if their vision is different than what was originally approved.
Would you see that happen?
I could see that happening.
So this person who has the twenty five acres or buys twenty five acres is not an investor. He's a developer. He has to develop the entire.
Sell it off and and, but he has to plan the whole development at twenty.
Okay, but if there should be sewage and other utilities, the big developer has to provide that?
Yes.
Okay, I just wondered where the breaking point was.
Yeah, yeah.
To me, it would be the breaking point. I mean, I don't, I I think anything less than that, we're, we're gonna start piece only bigger.
Well, it's different than residential. When you go out and market twenty five acres commercial, that's a lot.
It's a lot of commercial, but I also think that when you start looking at the smaller pieces of commercial. You're looking at one or two acres. So I don't wanna make the track size that small. So it's either make it. But making it any bigger than one and two acres doesn't achieve.
We get a twenty, we get twenty five acres of a true plan. It all works together.
That's fine. I wasn't doubting any of that. I'm trying to get it in my mind. Like I said, we've had discussions on it and we didn't know where that break.
Right.
Would be, and also we didn't wanna shut out. Some of these nicer little developments or their down commercial tracks.
So to summarize, it sounds like smaller developers buying out parcels or, you know, ac- acquiring land and develop. From larger developers is pretty commonplace. And by having the minimum be twenty five, we're, we have a better chance of ensuring like a cohesive. Design that that, you know, holistically kind of looks and and feels better planned and better developed.
And better access and better, yeah.
Cause the smaller you make that minimum requirement, the harder it's gonna be to.
Right, I was gonna just, I was actually gonna say that. I mean, if we keep it at the twenty five, then there there's, there's drainage and everything else. That that primary developer that purchases the twenty five acres has to contend with it. He has to make sure. Whereas then we would, the, you you, your whole, the whole design.
Um, a question about going back to uh. Being open space. Uh, at least twenty percent of the gross tract acreage shall be designated as permanent space. Okay, so if you have a twenty five acre parcel, five acres has got to be permanent open space. And then you go to see number dwelling units permitted. You were talking about twelve dwelling units per net acre. Is that? Before you do the count, is it, is that twelve units per acre on twenty five acres, even though it's squashed in twenty? Or is it twelve units per acre on twenty acres and the rest of it remains permanent?
So the way this is written is the twelve units per acre is based on after you exclude all of.
So this would be the twelve units per acre on the remaining twenty.
That's the way it is written. Can always be changed if it, if that's not how you want it, but that's the way it is written.
Are we considered uh, open space or or not? That should be green space.
I, I.
So this is.
Uh, I, real clear, I just, it wasn't clear to me when I read it the first time.
Yeah, this is Dutch Holland. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great, um, the the comment about tw- twenty five acres being sold to a large developer. As a small one point three acre owner. I like that idea because that means before they can build around me. They've gotta divi- they've gotta buy twenty five acres around me. And if they've bought twenty five acres all around me, then okay. Maybe I'll sell them then and move, but I think, I think that twenty five acre minimum. Helps protect the individual landowners. So, just my two cents.
But they can still do a PRD with a small parcel.
For just residential, this is commercial.
He see, he said.
Okay, yes, they. Correct, that is correct. No, that's a very good point. Correct. If they wanna go through the whole rezoning process, they can request another zoning district that accommodates what they propose to do.
Based on the comment that.
Yep.
It's a planned district, but it's not an overlay.
Correct, so it has to go through the full rezoning.
Yes, go through the full rezoning process.
And in that full rezoning process. The individual neighboring landowners are contacted and have input, correct?
That's correct, okay.
My my wife's already told me we have too much junk to move, so I'm really not interested in moving. But, you know, I, that's why I like the larger acres required to build. And then my, my area, it's, I think it's one, three houses per acre, three dwelling units per acre. But if they have to have that larger amount to build that around me, then I. Rightly or wrongly, I'm taking solace in that fact.
Good, so to play the devil's advocate, you were saying maybe more than twenty five acres. What, what's the, what?
The bigger the better for me, because I'm in the north side of Fancher. No, but I think twenty five is still a good chunk. Across the street from me, each of those lots is our size. There's two, two, I think, three point two acres for a single lot. So it'll take a lot of lots to get that, that twenty five. That's fine with me. I don't have a choice anyway.
Um, and and then, um, just a wording question we want.
This one doesn't have. Are we okay to go on or?
A question about, um, the sewage disposal. Um, central sewers are required for the overlay districts utilized. Um, and then the last sentence, new onsite water and septic systems are prohibited within this overlay district. It was the first time that you've talked about water in, indeed. Uh, do you wanna leave it there or do you wanna add that besides the Delaware County Senate?
I think we should have Delco water added and keep the water there.
You wanna change sewage disposal and?
I wrote fast, early on, a couple months ago, the board decided on a time limit on our days. Keep that tonight or? Cause we said an hour and a half.
Shall we make a, a motion to extend it by half an hour?
And I'm just asking, cause I was told I.
Is that enough?
I was told I'm kind of.
We'll get through.
Let's keep everybody in line.
Eight thirty, I, we won't get through all three of them, but we'll get through that.
But that eight thirty would be two hours.
Yeah, I would think eight thirty is good.
Alright, I, but, well, I think somebody needs, yes.
Then then we extend the meeting, this meeting to like thirty.
I second it.
Motion is second all in favor.
Okay, moving on. Um, so continuing the development plan standards, um, there's standards for stormwater, for pavement. Um, for paths, again, the five foot walking path or a ten foot multi-use path. There are standards for trees that need to be planted. And then section or line M, um, is what I would really like to talk about. Um, this says that existing tree lines must be preserved and that a two hundred foot woodland buffer must be established. From the right of way of an existing township or county road for any new development. Exactly, um, so in this two hundred foot buffer, minimum of forty feet must be native vegetation. So not just grass, but including, um, taller grasses, shrubs, um, trees. Um, trying to mimic the natural condition of a forest edge. Um, this reduces noise pollution. The visual impact is much better. Um, and then we have an image here as an example for the developer, what we want this to look like. So we have the grasses, um, moving into meadows, going into a woodland edge and then having the bigger canopy trees. Pointer, um, the woodland edges, this area here. So this would be your throbs and your grasses transitioning into your larger canopy trees here.
Where will the buildings be?
So this would be the street, buildings would be back here. We also have a minimum number of plantings for this. So if the buffer is forty feet, which we have here, you need. Um, at least four feet, four trees, um, per hundred linear feet of footage. Um, and I was on, we also have an example buffer here, small rendering. I'll stop for a second here. Um, so the purpose of what this is, is, um, the canopy, the larger canopy trees. They over time will grow taller and wider and will actually start filling this in. And then underneath it are the understory trees to help fill in so you don't see into the buildings. Um, for, yes.
Uh, question about that two hundred foot buffer. Uh, that green space would be counted as potentially mean part of the requirement of twenty percent.
It would, yes.
I made one to make sure because otherwise the property suddenly gets really.
Right, no, it would, it would be part of that.
Maybe it needs to.
I can add that, so can we get clear again?
What would be the buffer in between property lines?
I'm sorry?
What would be a buffer between property lines?
Um, we have, um.
In fourteen-one-month.
Yes, we have that farther down, so we'll get there under landscaping session, section, we'll talk about buffers between.
Yeah, agree.
Sure.
That's the calorie pair, it's the same family as calorie, calorie pairs, I think, yeah, but you could also be specific and add it.
Figure pairs, but. One more thing on the development plan standard number F, stormwater. Um, what this stormwater subcommittee has been debating, um, or suggesting actually, uh, is that we include some text wording. Uh, to this, to the fact that. Including any downstream impacts. So the developer is not just responsible for what happens on the property, but what they do on the property that affects downstream landowners. You don't, unless, well, you don't have a exact wording on it.
No wording yet.
We have to have, I mean, you, basically, like, the, the property on Harlem, that they're saying they're not gonna be exiting more water than it was normal.
Right, that is a typical language of not releasing any additional water available on what was originally created.
And this word, yeah. That's solar waters, that's the basic measures. Uh, but we've come across wording similar to this in other townships, basically, it's, it's. Putting the developer on notice upfront that they better do their calculations right, because they're responsible. And then you won't wait.
But how can you control, if you're gonna put buildings, are you gonna control the amount of runoff? When you had green spaces and, like, land masses that absorb the water, but now you're gonna put concrete? And you, you're gonna displace the water.
Detention, retention, everything, that's how they do it everywhere, um, we're looking at trying to hopefully do more regional detention. Um, but yeah, that's how they, they have to detain it, and it holds the water, and then it releases it at a rate, at pre-development rates.
And, and what we've been told is that these kinds of buffers, uh, tree, trees, for example, native grasses might absorb eighty percent of stormwater. Where a lawn would only. Where a lawn would only absorb fifty percent, and a, um, a hard skate would absorb maybe twenty percent or less. So the native buffering helps in absorbing, actually absorbing that, so you don't have runoff, absorbs. We'll see if that works, and the calculations are tough.
You know, all this depends on the elevations, because on the south side of, of, of Fancher Road, from where I live, the elevation is higher than my own property. And so that I have three pipes that go from my property across, and they, they spent eighty-seven thousand dollars to be able to, to channel that water, of which I'm paying one-fourth of it, because I have the biggest landmass of, of that project, even though. I didn't have anything to do with it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, the drainage petitions are rough. Um, and you probably, you're probably in Rocky Fork Watershed, which has different, because you.
I have no idea, I'm just east of, uh, of, uh, um, Miller Park on Fancher, just east, I have no idea what that is. Is that what that is?
There's the watershed. So, so you're not in the main watershed in the township, which is Duncan Run, you're south of that, and that water flows.
Yeah, right through our property, we have fifteen huge pipes.
And we're, we're trying to develop a, a township-like plan. So that each property owner doesn't have to manage the stormwater on, they're all, they're all part of a, a drainage plan. I don't know.
Too late for us, already did it, that's the sport.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
You would. Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's not yours. Okay.
So the section is talking about, um, earth burns, so we have, um, that low maintenance ground cover shall be used for this, um, when they are determined as necessary. Um, the berms are discouraged, but when necessary, they shall be constructed with a three-to-one slope.
And I wanted to ask about it, because, um, originally, in the presentations at the community meetings, I discouraged suburban types, type mounds. Which to me are taller, more rounded mounds, with just trees planted symmetrically and. Exact spacing down the top of the mound. This to me is a little bit different, this is where existing topography might lend itself to allowing a little bit of a mound. Um, the other thing is that I did have a property owner come up to me after one of the meetings, saying, sometimes you want some of that topography to help with the sound. Um, so I tried to work with Molly to find an example that showed that woodland buffer type example, but within that existing topography and limiting that size of. Mound that can be there, are you guys comfortable with that? Okay.
Yeah, Marshall will.
Okay, all right.
Excuse me, something like that, would that be in front of the mixed use? So you have two-hundred feet before, before the mixed use could have a, a structure?
Correct.
What, and, and parking lot begins the structure?
Uh, the parking, we allow, um, let me get over the park, can, can we talk about parking when we get there?
Sure.
Uh, but we have setbacks for parking, but when we get to the parking section.
So it's not two-hundred feet then parking?
Oh, yeah, it will be, nothing, nothing's in that two-hundred feet.
Nothing's in that two-hundred feet, so you take a corner, you gotta have two-hundred feet all the way around the corner, big trees and everything, so you're driving in a driveway. It's, it's not like you're on Hamilton Road and looking at every.
That's kind of, it's disaster.
Yeah, that's why we're planning and, and creating these.
Thank you.
Is that for flag lots as well?
Well, flag lot is something that's probably not going to meet that twenty-five acre minimum, so, um, they're gonna be developing, assembling land. To, um, develop a twenty-five acre parcel. It's gonna have frontage.
And then we have the bulk and area requirements, so this is minimum size, um, the minimum, minimum lot size, which we're talking about, um, so on and so forth, setbacks. Um, maximum building height, maximum lot coverage is eighty percent, taking in that twenty percent from an open space, yes.
Uh, building height, okay, we're not, we're not allowing flat roofs.
Correct.
All right. It's forty-five feet, uh, how many stories is that?
It's, um, it's typically three feet when it's flat, or three stories when it's flat roof, you're probably wanting to.
Okay, that's something we need to talk about.
Okay.
Um, the only question I have on this page with all the area requirements is in like the first, um, asterisk. It, um, it says at the end that this, um, includes yada, 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 districts that have not yet pulled down the cloud. Is pulling down the cloud an official term?
It's not official.
I mean, like, I just would have, like, I just didn't know if that was like the appropriate.
We can say pull down the.
Zoning overlay or something like that?
Whatever, the MU, uh, D overlay district.
Okay, I just think that would be a little bit more clear than calling it the cloud.
Yep. Good point.
So then, on mechanical and age-related movements, that you can add to the height. But.
Yeah.
We're just gonna eliminate that one?
Yeah, I'm eliminating that.
Thank you.
I mean, you're not gonna put an HVAC unit on a six-twelve pitch?
Come on. I, I just wanna go back to the flag lot question, because right here, the minimum lot width has to be half the width of the depth, even to pull down this. And you'd be, so you're not gonna have a flag lot situation in here.
Holly, is this part of the question that I think Mike asked about, uh, residential? The family, single-family residential, a hundred feet, uh, rear and side setbacks.
So, so that is the setback, but when we get into the landscaping section, we'll actually talk about what kind of landscaping has to be put in that setback as a buffer. Yeah.
But that is, it's a hundred feet, though, then all the landscaping would be put within that.
Correct, yes.
And what's the maximum height again for these structures?
Right now, we have forty-five, but we're gonna talk to the fire department about it.
Elevators?
Um.
That, that high?
Yeah.
No, if I were to think of, I'm gonna be two stories.
With a pitched roof.
Pardon?
For a business, wouldn't you have to have an elevator? Cause of, um, ADN.
If it's. If it, i- if it's, if it's, if it's a two-story commercial, but if it's commercial with a residential, I've no.
Okay, I don't know, I mean, that's getting into building codes, and that's not gonna code for the township, so.
Not with the roof, if you, if you, if you call it out.
Commercial typically has higher roofs because they put the utilities in there, then drop this, so they're what, fourteen, sixteen foot higher. So that's why.
No, I was thinking residential, not commercial, you're right, but, Marshall.
And next we have the minimum dwelling or area, um, we wanted to discuss these with you to.
I have numbers I've used in other communities, but I'm, I'm, okay.
Every there.
Studio is six-hundred. Uh, two-bedroom is, a thousand and three-bedroom is twelve-hundred.
What's the last one?
Twelve-hundred.
What, what's that, three-bedroom?
Three-bedroom.
Six-hundred's a little small.
That's what I thought you guys would say, eight-hundred for that?
Uh, we did seven-fifty, they were pretty.
Fifty, okay.
I mean, can you, does it, does studio and one-bedroom have to be combined, cause if it's a studio, you could get away with smaller.
I don't think you know it much.
Depends on the generation you're talking to.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I think in general, studios are not very popular, but.
Just keep that, just, you don't want a studio that's seven-hundred and fifty feet, so you would have to actually have a separate home and studio, then one bedroom.
Which do you guys want, take-away studio or separate it out and have studio six-hundred?
So then you do the studio at six-hundred.
Yep, okay.
I doubt you'd get a lot of developers putting in a ton of studios, but I feel like we don't wanna exclude, I don't wanna exclude the option.
And this. I have, you've got a two-hundred-and-fifty step up from seven-fifty to a thousand, you want another two-fifty step up to twelve-fifty?
We could do that, yeah.
I, I don't know what a developer would say.
Usually that third bedroom's a lot smaller.
The twelve-hundreds enough?
Yeah, I mean, I recently lived in a three-bedroom apartment, it was like twelve-hundred and forty, and, I mean, it felt very spacious.
We're mostly, we're doing one in two divisions.
Okay, so next is lighting, um, I don't know, there's too much we need to go here.
I'll just talk about how it's cut off fixtures and how I can.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, number three, all light fixtures shall be full cut-off type fixtures, um, and then, we have to, down in, um, number two. Yep, yes, okay, um, so then, number five, um, number. Let's go over there, on the maximum illumination at a lot line that abuts any other use shall be one foot candles, um, and then directly above that. If it is next to a lot that is zoned for single family, it will be point three foot candles.
Yeah, I make a comment here with respect, at the end of Fancher, uh, almost at intersection with, uh, with Harlem, they built a self-storage facility. About two years ago, maybe three years ago, we were here, listening to the people who wanted to develop it there, and they promised that the lighting would not obstruct the neighbors. You go over there at night, and that thing is, is just like, it's lit up like an air, like an airport runway.
Did they provide a photometric plan at the meeting?
I think they did.
They did?
But I don't think they invited by it, because you, you, you brought by there, it just all lit up, I mean, it's just, uh, downtown city.
Uh, I suggest, I'm gonna have a formal complaint to the zoning inspector and then go follow up on it.
Yes, someone should complain to the zoning inspector, and he can follow up, because there are lighting requirements that have.
I feel sorry for those neighbors behind him. Okay.
I think it's a fair complaint.
Wish I could do that about my neighbors with like, lights that shine directly in my bedroom every night.
This is not one of these, like, uh.
Going back to the foot candles?
Unscrew their light bulb.
Better than this, or is that fairly standard?
Um, we can note the, um, type of. Tool that is used to measure, advise, yep.
What's it called, like a photimeter or something technical like that?
At the lot line.
Why would it be in the street?
It would be, if the front lot line would be either the right-of-way, depends upon, front line's a little different, cause it could be center line, it could be dedicated right-of-way, and you have a front line at the right-of-way. Um, but on a side lot lines, it would be measured at the property line rear.
Just. Subjectively, like, how, how bright or not bright is point-three-foot candles and like one-foot candles? It's like a dimly lit room, or like, I mean, I'm, I just don't know how to.
I can't, I can't describe it.
Check with this room, it'll give me an example.
I'll just have to, I'm sure there's an app for that, I'll have to download some kind of photometer app and start like, taking measurements around my house.
You would be surprised, it's, um, it's fairly dead.
Um, so you've got, uh, lumens called out in number eight-five, um, and foot candles, um. Nothing but the color of the light were coming distance.
We do not in here, and there's, um, signs for, if we have digital signs, we have the color specified, um, we can talk about color.
You know that, uh, lights that are either lenses that are red, uh, or, or easier on the eyes, and they don't disrupt your night vision, because they're yellow and white.
It's actually a good point, it doesn't talk about color temperature at all, does it?
We'll add something about color temperature.
How do you feel about number seven?
In, in light lighting?
Uh, well, non-central after lighting?
Yes. Or not after.
The one.
And some communities don't like it and some do, so that's why I had her ask you what your preference was.
Is it swarthy? Why don't they like?
Because of a safety issue.
Security lighting.
Right.
I mean, are they turning half off, seventy-five percent off, where are they turning off?
There's, they're turning everything that they don't deem.
So it's subjective?
It is subjective.
Um. You could put a percentage on it.
Hmm, that's in, in lux, is lux the same as?
Comment on here too, no lighting.
I'm just wondering how my. So making it subjective, is there somebody you can contact and send that? Sorry, I was pulling up the light.
What do you wanna know?
Um, so the language is, are we going to let them turn the lighting down on off-hours? To help protect the neighborhoods from, you know, lighting, but what is safety, so is it reducing it by seventy-five percent, fifty percent? So, that you're, uh, getting both, both results.
I would say if you're gonna do. I would say if you're gonna do, if we're gonna do something like that, we, we, we set more of a. This makes sense, a distance from the, the building structure. They're gonna wanna keep around the structure. Maybe go to fifty percent so far out.
Right, next is landscaping. Um, so we've got two pictures here, just some of example landscaping mixed use type developments. The landscaping we have shall align with the rural design theme which we touched on earlier. All landscaping shall be well maintained, um, if it's not, will be replaced within six months. All landscaping material needs to be shown on the required plan. So on and so forth. There are some things about site triangles here, so not allowing landscaping to um. Become a hazard to anybody. For driving. And then we have um, parking lot screening here. Um, so this is saying any surface parking lot adjacent to a public right of way needs to be screened. Um, by using one of the following methods, there's five of them listed here with a couple of pictures of examples. So a continuous planting of hedges or trees, um, of decorative wall or fence with landscaping. Um, decorative planters. And then utilizing native species as well.
Spelling error, seven, first line.
In the um, number two bullet, um, where it talks about opacity. Is that, so fifty percent winter, is that like? Obviously, in those winter, the leaves, trees don't have leaves, so you could see through more. Okay. So. Okay. Isn't that, that, is, with the way opacity is defined, is that accurate? I always thought of opacity as like the percent openness, so a higher opacity feels. Okay, then my, then my mind's mixed up then, thank you.
Um, the next section. Um, the next section is going into parking. Can we stop for a second? I'm sorry. Um, I'm gonna add some better landscaping between lot lines, cause I don't. I think we need to address that, get to your comments, so we'll add that. Okay, so parking, um, parking areas need to be designed in construction to minimize the visual impact of the parking area. We have parking bays included in here. Parking lot locations are having parking lots being located behind or to the side of the principal building. Parking shouldn't, shall not be closer than thirty feet from any right of way. There are standards for parking bays, just saying that there shall be no more than twenty-four parking spaces, um, with a maximum of twelve spaces in a single row. Um, so just breaking up that parking a little bit more. We have requirements for parking lot islands. Um, and then. Parking lot screening again is required here. And then we go into the number of parking spaces required for the uses and we have this. Nice chart here, breaking down every permitted use that we had in the section above, talking about permitted uses, section oh four. Um, and then breaking it down by a minimum number of required parking. Spaces and then a maximum number of required parking spaces as well. Um, we did this to try to minimize just a ton of unnecessary parking. A ton of concrete down on the ground when you could potentially minimize this, so that's where the maximum and the minimum are included here.
I have a question. Uh, it says one space per dwelling.
So it says for the mixed-use building, is this switching? Alright, so one space per dwelling, that would be residential, and then one space per two hundred sixty-five square feet of non. Like space, so I can change that to say residential if that's clear.
Well, so then we have a problem.
Yeah.
Uh, that's not a parking for, for apartment.
Well, the max.
There's two columns. That's maximum, but. People will abide by the minimum.
Not necessarily. I actually have developers that come in a lot of times and say that the, the maximum is too, too low. Or. Minimum is too low and so, yeah.
You don't, you don't think somebody's gonna take advantage of that?
People don't wanna live somewhere where they don't have enough parking. Well, then they move out.
And the other thing with the mixed-use buildings is that the businesses are not always open. So being able to help them share spaces. Um, that's why you can typically reduce the apartments down a little bit when you're as part of a mixed-use building.
The only comment I have, and this is just because it's very familiar to me, is um. Early childhood education, I think the maximum needs to be increased because my daycare. It is a madhouse trying to get in and out at drop-off and pickup. So I think there needs to be some allowance for like one space for every employee plus some number of spaces. Per. Enrolled students or something, and it probably doesn't need to be. The amount of high, but, but. It's just, it wouldn't. Typically, all their employees are there every day. They don't have a lot of like support staff that's not. There during their opening hours. So all those spaces are taken up by their employees. There's no parking for pickup and drop-off.
Is it bigger issue with that? Having a proper circulation flow design, so, cause I know a lot of people. Some people have to go in by rule to get their kids, but others, you know, they let them go out the door, but the cars are out to the street. Have you ever faced that issue?
Um, for elementary and middle schools, yes, for the daycare, a lot early.
Yeah, the early, specifically the early childhood education, which is daycare, you always have to go in.
Have to, I mean, all the way up to what age six is what they usually.
Probably, cause that's like kindergarten.
Um, it just came to me, everything that you've described, I think is absolutely wonderful. And it makes where I live a lot more attractive, especially with the two hundred foot offset and everything. But by having restriction like this, is this kind of counterintuitive to what we're trying to prevent? Would this be pushing developers to want to try to annex to Columbus because of these restrictions?
No, um, cause they're gonna have restrictions like this in Columbus too. They're not gonna have the architecture probably as much, but they're gonna have parking, they're gonna have landscaping. And as long as they know the standard upfront and they know what that cost is, they will comply.
I just have it in my head, the Columbus would kinda like be free for all, they could, developers can pretty much do what they want, and that would be very attractive to them. So that these restrictions would make Columbus look more attractive.
I, I, that's why we're trying to keep the densities comparable to Columbus, so that really the only difference is, is that architectural standard. And as long as you tell the developers upfront, both, and, and you're not wishy-washy and you're not changing your standard mid-process.
As long as they, they, they just want the knowledge.
Yep.
Okay, good, thanks.
Next, I feel like a lot of times they probably like. They can have the budget to meet these requirements, but like you said, when, when the requirements change every meeting and they have to constantly go back for revisions and update their. Then it's like that. That's worse for them.
The problem is, yeah.
Um, who is responsible for enforcing? Not, not necessarily in the beginning, but you've got a two hundred foot buffer. Trees die, who's responsible for being sure they're replaced? Concrete starts cracking or so. Who is?
So, so in this area with the JED, it would probably still just go back along the, the property owners to maintain that. We have language in here that, that's required to maintain. If they don't, it's a zoning violation. When you get into the other districts with the residential with the NCA's, that, a lot of that's gonna happen through the NCA boards.
I mean, enforcement of.
Right, NCA's will help enforce too. But.
In the commercial?
Yeah, uh, in the commercial, I think it's gonna be the owners have to do it, and if they don't, then the zoning inspector's gonna have to.
Alright, down here, I understand. If you have the commercial on the bottom. Now we get down to multifamily dwellings themselves. Alright, we're still back, your minimum is one space per dwelling unit.
So. So I have that exact standard, I had it in a different, different community, I had one and I had two. We actually had to change it because a developer said, we need three spaces. Per unit, so we actually ended up amending that district to allow the three spaces, which is why I went with the three. I agree that. With that, the developers said.
There, there is a Columbus code. Um, I'm just, I'm just worried. People go squeeze. And the one and a half wasn't enough, don't get me wrong, but that, I'm, I'm trying to think of an actual code. And there is a Columbus code that was done in here. I talked to the zoning inspector. About this and uh. You know, we, we would push for the two, but if you wanna make it the one and a half, firstly, I will be happy with this. Because we're matching some, it's already. But since you're gonna have a studio, one bedroom, a two bedroom and a three bedroom. They all gonna have a different requirement.
Well, they can go to the three. For a studio, more than one.
What you're banking on is still, are still people. That half goes to the next year. So we're trying to average it, but like I said, that's a minimum zone that I know about. Like you said, the, the better developer is gonna go with the two. Or more.
The one developer wanted the three and we had to accommodate that.
But. The, the ones that I was thinking of, they're still out there. So, that's what, that's what we're raising.
Yeah.
Yeah, I assume there's a size associated with parking space also, cause vehicles are, I usually don't bid, so.
Uh, well, I have nine by eighteen in here, but we can go ten by twenty.
I don't know if the standards are, I know the compact is too small. I can tell you that.
Nine by eighteen is typically a standard parking space.
Your big up trucks.
I, that's what I'm saying, some communities are going to ten by twenty, but. I, I highly urge the less pavement that we can get, the best, the better your community will be.
It's the happy mediumness, they're not all motorcycle parking spots.
So they won't be, but nine by eighteen is.
Okay, I'm good with that.
So it says, parking may encroach a right-of-way setback line. But in no case shall parking be less than thirty feet from the road right of way.
Yeah, it conflicts with the buffer. Good call.
Now with the thirty feet, are by to the other sides though?
That actually has a five foot setback.
So what is?
We're just taking it out, it has to meet the two hundred foot setback.
What if it's that back of the backside of a building or on the backside of the property? For parking.
Uh, five feet. If it's abutting at another commercial property, a hundred feet if it's abutting a residential. Any other parking related questions?
What's in between that? A hundred, hundred feet, is that green space? Is, is there any requirement to plant in that?
So that's, um, that was the question he had over here. And I don't, I think that we probably need to come up with a better landscaping standard for that buffer, so the next drop's gonna have some. Easier stuff in there.
Yeah, I think that's important because as residents who want to try and stay here. This isn't next to me, but the next time it might be next to me. And if I'm gonna have any prayer staying, I need that buffer.
Yep.
And how far from the residential line? Is the, does the one hundred feet start? Does it start on the one, right on the residential line? So residential line one hundred feet and then there can be a parking lot.
Correct.
With the appropriate screening and landscaping between.
Could that hundred feet be increased? Sorry, I've been here my whole life. Without anybody around me, so.
I'm just concerned that we might take up all the open space.
Disagree with what you're saying, because if you have two hundred feet off the road, which have a hundred feet next to my property. What's more important, my property or the road? So I, I'm waiting, yeah. Uh, if you guys would consider that and have a discussion about it.
Fifty and one fifty is a better.
I like anything more than a hundred. Two hundred off the road with great. You know.
Let us look at um. A piece of, a couple pieces of the, uh, larger lots and seeing what that was. We'll look at it and report back at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Got a difficult lot with a lot of swells. Drainage issues that complicate.
I'm the old farm boy in the building room right now, so. Check my farm.
So the north side of Fancher, on part of Fancher is considered residential and the south side is considered mixed use? Alright, up to green.
Up to green cup, yeah.
Lighting requirement on the south side overrule what the lighting requirement would be on the residential side? I mean, the last thing I want is to have these very powerful lights, like, like this self-storage uh, facility has. Shining right, right in front of my house.
It has to be point three at the property line, the front property line. I can't tell you if it's always gonna be the center of the road or if it's gonna be at a right-of-way line, cause I don't know. What the front property line is all the way through the danger road. If it's dedicated right of way or if it people owned to the center line.
Well, I know, is that twenty years ago, I was part of a building community, we built a church in Westerville, and because we were in a community. We were not allowed to put lights on, on the building itself, we had to put them all light bulbs, all shining down. That's not what the self-storage.
But this is different, this will be going forward and this overlay will have cut off fixtures.
Good violation, because that one's required.
Right.
Holy art, our property line is that all through.
Okay, then that's where it would be measured. Unless they're dedicating it as part of this development, they, they may dedicate right of way. And when they dedicate right of way, then the front property line becomes the right of way line.
We could skip the sign section, more or less.
Well, just a couple things to say about that, um, signs again are, have to adhere to this rural design theme. Um, they are eighty percent of the natural materials listed above, so stone, wood. Brick. And then we also have colors and fonts need to align with the rural character of the area, utilizing greens, browns, tans, whites, muted blues. Blank space in case there was anything that anybody felt was missing from that. But if not. Um, then we have all the different sign regulations, so projecting signs are first. Um, then we move into wall signs, all of these have a maximum height, a maximum square footage. And then the maximum number of signs permitted. For tenants, there are ground signs included, canopy signs as well. And then we also have regulations included for temporary signs.
Are there setbacks for like monument signs?
For ground signs, um, yes, there's a minimum distance from the right of way of ten feet.
For ground signs, yes, there's a minimum distance from the right of way of ten feet. But then things like wall signs.
There it is, okay.
Next section we have is the extension and modification of the development plan. And this just talks about the process for that. No modifications shall be made that increase the permitted density or adds to the list of permitted uses. There are a list of minor modifications here, and so these would not have to go through the full process, but could be approved administratively. These are small things like an increase in no more than five feet of the building height. Modern or minor modifications to a sign face or a landscaping plan, other small changes like this.
Can I go back to signs for a second? So I didn't understand from the right of way, but like the ground signs. So, so could people put a ground sign in that two hundred foot buffer? And how, and what is the requirement then off the road for that?
Off the right-of-way line, yes.
Which, which at center of the road, I mean, I honestly, I get worried about.
That the right-of-way line's different than property line. Property line might go to the center line of the road, but the right-of-way line's going to be back further. And I think we need to have a conversation, too, because we need to be measuring setbacks for signs, setbacks for buildings, setbacks for parking lots from the future right-of-way line. So whatever Fancher Road needs to be, we need to define that in here. I actually think we have a space up at the beginning. We're gonna talk about that. What what do we want that to be? How do we want to define that? I don't know if we're there yet with the traffic studies. So I think some additional conversations need to hap- happen with the county engineer's office and understanding what those future right-of-ways are. But then every measurement should be taken from those right-of-ways for setbacks.
I guess my question is, do we even have to allow? I mean, what the signs in the green streets?
Yeah, otherwise, no one would know what's behind it.
Yeah, property, but you have a two hundred.
I've seen developments without.
You're gonna get into a First Amendment issue if you do not allow a sign for somebody to tell what's in their property.
Yeah, and just being able to know what, yeah, you'd be turning into the wrong one constantly, having to turn back out, I don't know, yeah, I I would.
Go to Hilton Head is a very good example of how they can integrate signs into setbacks and be aesthetically pleasing. But they, they still have signs.
Okay.
In in letter V, it's on the page after, you know, like whatever, divergences. It says that the commission may grant divergence assistance for anything except density. Didn't we also say that it was also except like the land uses?
Right.
Okay, can that be clarified?
What about open space?
We can add that, too.
Hey, Holly, the the line you have or what you talked about, these things don't require a approval, like if you're, I forget what the number was, but like ten percent larger than or five percent larger than the the building is supposed to be. Do you find that some developers will go ahead and say, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and build this five percent larger because I can?
I have not found that, because it specifically states in here that it has to be approved by the zoning inspector. And the developers and other communities where this is have come to the community saying, I need to make this minor adjustment and then get the written approval for their records.
For the record, one of our online participants is recommending a road trip to Hilton Head.
As long as it includes everybody on the line, too.
I see a grayhound bus falling. So under point oh nine, modification of the development plan, number so it talks about development plan shall expire and the land shall be subject to the previous zoning designation by the zoning commission. Unless the application is taken, it's time to submit it. So that's saying that an overlay district, that if an overlay district is you can in fact revert back to the original underlying zone.
You cannot automatically revert back. That avoid, that is avoiding a due process to the property owner, but the township can initiate the rezoning back to the original zoning classification and take it through the zoning process and hold the public hearings and give the owner the opportunity to state their case.
So the owner can pull down the cloud, but cannot reverse that.
Correct, the owner cannot reverse it, it would be.
Once it's, once it's an overlay district, that's done.
Yeah, unless they ask to be rezoned, but it would have to go back through the rezoning process.
If the township can rezone it through the rezoning process, if the developer has developed.
Correct.
Okay, so that's why it says it could be sub- subject to be rezoned.
Yes, okay, yep.
And this is still a two-step process.
Correct.
Mission trustees.
Correct.
We talked about at some point maybe a one-step process, but that's not about this.
That's not this. The procedure section, we didn't talk about.
No.
Right, and so we haven't touched that, so right now it's still a two-step process. It could be a one-step process.
So several years ago, we had some out-of-town judge who was visiting, throw out our zoning completely, which allowed things to be brought in that probably would not have been brought in otherwise. Is there anything we can put either before this zoning goes in, or as part of the zoning to say, if some part of this is found to be overturned judicially, that it doesn't mean everything here is overturned judicially?
There should be a severability clause in your zoning code that applies to the entire zoning code, so if any part of your zoning code is unconstitutional or invalid by the courts, the rest of it is not. If that part is not in your code, you have trouble, you need to add that to your code.
Severability, is that?
Severability. I can look to and make sure it's there. It should be, but. Are you serious?
Let me go, in nineteen eighty-eight, the whole zoning resolution was invalidated.
Okay, well, we need to get that in, and you probably should get it in fast before anything.
You know, is there a severability clause?
I don't think there. I don't know for certain if it's there or not, I think it is.
You do, I I think it's nerves and we'll have to look.
Well, we'll all have homework.
I think that was the recommendation that came from legal planning and.
On our time, yeah. Okay, well, we we are finished, and we'll turn it back to you, Carl.
Alright. One minute, basically, are there any subcommittees that absolutely have to bring anything tonight?
My pass.
Well, then I would entertain a motion.
I will read adjourned.
Motion adjourned, and a second, all in favor, I. Thanks, everybody for coming.
Which one are we?
We are not any of these new.
So this package is not, all of this package doesn't.
No, so we are up where we live in the northeast quadrant is staying with the current zoning overlay, which is the two-acre net, the two-acre PRCD, which already.